It is now 5:30. I would like to call this recess meeting of the Board of Alderman and the city of Starkville to order. If you would please, we will stand for the pledge of allegiance. We will have invocation by Chaplain Arrender, and then we'll follow that with a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain Arrender.
This past week, Officer Henry Stewart called me at the chaplain's side, made him at the emergency room. I want to remind everybody that this past week, we actually lost two of the youth of our community in Washington, so much to our city. I want to be in prayers to both of these families during this time as we have lost two of our youth. Let's pray again. Father, we thank you for the gift of each new day. May we take none of them for granted. We thank you for the sunshine. We thank you for the rain. Father, we ask now your prayers upon this city, its leaders, as we conduct the business of our city and our community. Give us wisdom and insight. Help us to know the fruit of the Spirit as we communicate with one another, love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, gentleness, and self-control. For against such things there is no law. May we especially be in prayer for these families who are grieving of the loss of our precious children, who trust them. These children and these families in your hands. In your precious son's name, let him be praised.
Thank you all. And thank you, Chaplain Arrender. Appreciate that. Our next item is to approve the official agenda with consented items, and there are a couple of items that need to be removed from the agenda. Specifically, under F. Fire Department, we will remove item one, which was a Pafford EMS contract, and then we will not be having an executive session this evening. So those two items, I know of. Is there anything? I also noted that under the Fire Department, two, three, and four, those were fairly standard items that did not end up being on consent. If anyone's interested in putting those on consent, that's an option. All right. I have a motion to put those items on consent. Is there any concern about that?
Second.
A second, although, thank you. All right. Seeing that, we'll put those on consent. And then, do we have any further adjustments to the agenda or the consented items as they are on the current agenda? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the consented items as modified. I have a motion from Alderman Sistrant. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Carver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. And then I will read the consented items. And see here. First item on consent is under Board Business, consideration of an engagement letter with Watkins Ward and Stafford, P L L C, for the City of Starkville Audit for the fiscal year Under Airport, we have request approval to accept the 2019 M D O T Multimodal Grant Offer MM-0068-0920 for upgrading the self-service fuel terminal in the amount of $71,540 with an airport match of $1,460. Under Planning, we have the acceptance of a $5,000 grant from American Association of Retired Persons, A A R P, to keep Starkville beautiful if chosen as a grant recipient. Under Finance Administration, we have consideration of acceptance of the June financial statements. And under the Fire Department, we have item two, which was just approved for consent, consideration of authorization for Coleman Norman to participate in the City of Starkville Educational Assistance Program to take associate-level courses in fire science with a total reimbursement cost not to exceed $1,500 per semester. Number three is permission for Marvin Fort to attend the incident response to terrorist bombings, I R T B Class B course, New Mexico, scheduled for July the 29th, August the 1st, 2019, at no cost to the city. Item number four is consideration of purchasing a Rosenbauer fire apparatus under state contract number 8200028187 from Goldie's Fire Apparatus, L L C, at an approximate cost of $819,641. This apparatus will be the replacement for Engine Four, which is the current MSU fire apparatus. Under Human Resources, we have number one, which is request authorization to extend Halbert Blair to work in the Street Department for another 120 days as a seasonal maintenance worker. Number two is request authorization to advertise for one temporary seasonal employee assigned to the Street Department. Number three is request authorization to advertise for a part-time grounds maintenance worker for the Airport Department. Number four is request authorization to hire Matthew McCarley as an aircraft lineman, F B O, in the Starkville Airport Department. Number five is request authorization to hire Traylon Dansler as a temporary maintenance worker one in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Number six is request authorization to extend Destin Gladney and Kathy Sims to work in the Starkville Utilities Department for another 120 days as a seasonal customer service representative. Number seven is request authorization to hire Tiberius Lampkin as an entry-level firefighter and Nick Shoemaker as a certified firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department and to retain the candidates from the selection process held on July the 9th, 2019, for consideration to fill any additional vacant positions in the Fire Department due to retirements, terminations, or approved additions to the Fire Department within a period of 90 days. Number eight is request authorization to advertise for an animal control officer in the Starkville Police Department. Number nine is request authorization to hire Marqueta Bradford as a seasonal customer service representative in the Starkville Utilities Department. Under Parks, we have request permission to allow Gary Logan to attend the National Recreation and Park Association Conference, N R P A, in Baltimore, Maryland, on September the 24th through the 26th, 2019, with estimated costs that should not exceed $1,600. In the Police Department, we have request authorization for Chris English and Parker Medine to attend the Field Training Officer Course in Oxford, Mississippi, on July the 22nd through the 24th, 2019, with total cost not to exceed $1,000. Number two is request authorization to allow Captain Mark Ballard to attend the 2019 FBI Summer Training Conference in Gulfport, Mississippi, on August the 25th through the 29th, 2019, with cost not to exceed $750. Number three is request authorization to renew a maintenance agreement with Cummins Sales and Service for full service for the Starkville Police Department generator at an annual cost of $800. Under Utilities, number one is request approval for Madison Smith with the Electric Division of Starkville Utilities to travel to Nashville, Tennessee, to attend Line Design and Staking Five Class, August the 5th through the 7th, 2019, with a total cost not to exceed $2,200. Number two is request approval for Noah Jones with the Electric Division of Starkville Utilities to travel to Scottsboro, Alabama, to attend Lineman Assessment Class, August the 18th through the 24th of 2019, with total cost not to exceed $2,600. Request approval to accept the lowest and best bids received for the July 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019, Source of Supply Listing for Starkville Utilities Electric Division and Water Division. Number four is request authorization to submit an RFQ for SCADA Integration Maintenance and Support Services for the wastewater plant and lift station. And number five is request approval for the lowest and best quote from Terry Stidham Construction in the amount of $5,600 for electrical conduit along Highway 12. And that completes the consent agenda items. Thank you, Mayor. My pleasure. Thank you, Alderman Bone. All right. And the next item we have is approval of the minutes of the June 28, 2019, work session of the Mayor and Board of Alderman. Do I have a motion?
They move.
I have a motion from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. It's unanimous. Thank you. Then, under announcements and comments, I have, under Mayor's comments, I have the privilege of introducing new employees, which is always a wonderful thing to get to do. And we will start with the Police Department, because that's what my script says I'll start with, so we will do that now. And first, on the list, we have Marcus Rodriguez. Marcus is from Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Prior to joining the Starkville Police Department, he worked at Choctaw County Sheriff's Department as a deputy for nine years. Marcus and his wife have three daughters, Autumn, Neve, Arista, and two sons, Dominique and Joseph. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family and fishing in tournaments. Is that bass fishing?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it? Okay, cool. All right. And Rachel Richardson. Rachel comes to the City of Starkville from Holly Springs, Mississippi. She was employed as a server and bartender with Gondolier Italian Restaurant before joining the Starkville Police Department. She's a graduate of Mississippi State University with a bachelor's degree in psychology and criminology. Rachel lived outside of London, England, for two and a half years when she was a young child. In her free time, she enjoys spending time baking and watching movies. And next, we have Dontavion Lee. He is from Hattisburg, Mississippi. His previous employment was with the Lowndes County Detention Center in Lowndes County. Dontavion and his wife have two daughters, Michelle and Janaye, and two sons, Dontavion and Devon. Dontavion graduated from Mississippi State University with a bachelor's degree in kinesiology. He also played football at Mississippi State and played in the Belt Bowl and the Tax Slayer Bowl. And in his free time, he enjoys playing with his children and working out. And we will welcome these three new police officers. Thank you. And next on my list are firefighters, and we have five firefighters to introduce this evening. We have Jamie Adams. Jamie is from Houston, Mississippi, and is a graduate of Mississippi State University, where he majored in kinesiology with a concentration in health and fitness. Before joining the City of Starkville, Jamie was a firefighter with Columbus Fire and Rescue. Jamie and his wife Casey are the proud parents of three children, Ellie, Caroline, and Rain. During his free time, Jamie enjoys spending time with his family, hunting, fishing, and health and nutrition. He and his family attend vibrant church in Columbus, Mississippi. Okay. Who's Jamie? Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. Next, we have Mitch Graves. Y'all are all lined up. Okay, great. Mitch is originally from Newberry Park, California, and is a graduate of Newberry Park High School. Mitch is attending Mississippi State University, working towards a degree in liberal arts. Previously, Mitch worked for American Leak Detection. When time permits, Mitch enjoys volunteering with volunteer fire departments. He attends Pine Lake Church, as well as First Baptist Church in Starkville. Zakeen Hawkins. Ah, y'all skipped one on me. Okay. Zakeen is from Memphis, Tennessee. He's a graduate of Mississippi State University with a degree in interdisciplinary science, with an emphasis in biological science and general business. Prior to becoming a firefighter with the City of Starkville, Zakeen worked as an E M T in Octavia County Regional Hospital. He enjoys cooking, exercising, building, and maintaining computer technology, as well as spending time with his wife, Deja, and his son, Aiden. He and his family attend Finding Your Way Through Christ Church in Starkville. Next, we have Preston Newman. Thank you. Preston is from Grenada, Mississippi, and is a graduate of Mississippi State University with a degree in agricultural science. Previously, Preston was an independent contractor remodeling and rebuilding homes. He enjoys spending time with his wife, Lauren, as well as hunting, fishing, woodworking, and cooking. He and his family attend the First Baptist Church in Starkville. And next, we have Clarence Parks. Clarence has been in the ministry and married to Misty Parks for 22 years, and together they have four children, three grandchildren, and two dogs. Mr. Parks has completed the Scott Firefighter Combat Challenge World Finals every year since 2007, and has won multiple awards, and is a three-time world champion and record holder. Clarence Parks' previous employment was with the Mississippi Fire Academy, as he served with all three instructional bureaus for the Mississippi Fire Academy, which includes the coordination of programs such as NFPA 1002D/0/pumping-aerial, NFPA 10061-2, and NFPA 1521, NFPA 10011-2, and Advanced Firefighting Activities. I'm sure I butchered all that, but that's as close as I could get. He also served as fire chief for the City of Moss Point Fire Department and leads the department through many natural disasters in the assistance of Mississippi National Guard and other surrounding agencies. He has managed multiple large-scale natural disasters, such as Hurricane Isaac in 2012, Tropical Storm Karen in 2013, and South Mississippi Ice Storm in 2013. And Clarence believes in the motto, "Failing to prepare is preparing to fail." So, welcome all of these new firefighters. Thank you. We appreciate y'all being here with us tonight. And last but not least, we have the Utilities Department. Thank you to Big Mitch. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Mr. Parks, nice to meet you. Thank you. We have, first, is Starkville Utilities, Mr. Stephen Evans. Oh, thank you. Mr. Evans is a resident of Starkville. Prior to joining Starkville Utilities, he worked with Box Construction as a laborer. He received his G E D. through Mississippi Job Corp. in Crystal Springs, Mississippi. He also attended Mary Holmes Junior College and studied business administration. He is a single father with one son and two grandchildren. Keven Ware. Now, that's a familiar face, guys. Who do we recognize? Does this look like somebody we know? All right. Mr. Ware, he is a resident of Starkville, Mississippi. He attended Starkville High School and EMCC for two years, majoring in criminal justice. He also played basketball while at EMCC. Prior to coming to the City of Starkville, he was employed by the C. C. Clark Beverage Group as a builder, truck loader, and a forklift operator. He enjoys cleaning his car and spending time with family and friends. Mr. Aldridge, Alan Aldridge, is from Kennedy, Alabama. At his previous employer, Electric Motors Sales and Services in Columbus, he was a servo motor technician. He holds a bachelor's degree from the University of Mobile and an associate's degree from Shelton State Community College. Outside of work, Alan enjoys spending time with family and friends, hosting a podcast called Porch Talk, and going to concerts. Welcome to all three of them. Thank you so much. And that concludes introductions, and I don't think that there's anything else that I have on my list of announcements and comments to make. Do we have anything from any board members? Anything from any board members? All right. Seeing none, we will move to citizens' comments. This is a time in which citizens have the opportunity to come and speak to us. You have three minutes for anything you would like to say. We normally do not respond to questions and that sort of thing. If the board chooses to do so, it certainly may, but our history of doing that is that we do not respond, but it is your opportunity to say whatever you'd like to say. So, anyone who wishes to do so now is a time. Mr. Turner is a noticeable absence from our audience today. He is usually with us, and Mr. Turner is not feeling well this evening, and he wished to convey to the board his condolences for not being able to join us. So, I share that with you. If anyone wishes to come speak, now is the time.
Mayor, Board, how are you all today? My name is John Tolliver, 26 Choctaw Road, Starkville, Mississippi, and I say that with pride. Not that pride is a good thing, but I choose to live here. Whether I can afford it or not, I choose to live in this city. My family and I, we've been out of our home for 10 months now, and I know that's almost an old record, but I commend you for your job, because I kind of understand that having these positions is really not easy, especially when people are going to disagree with you from time to time. And still, you are to have the integrity to do your job anyway. And for the most part, I think you do have some. But you've been biased, not only to me and my family, but you've been biased to Ward Six and Ward Seven. You've been biased because you treat it like it's us versus them, the haves versus the have-nots. I've seen cities that, when the city council comes together, those are great cities to live in. You applaud those cities, because they are working together. But I've seen cities that the council would not work together, and even the most beautiful part of that city is drying up, because you're fighting, excuse me, you're fighting one another. There are plenty of things that have to get passed in this city for this city to operate. And I understand that a lot of times, it's going to be three, four, or five to two. But I also understand that it's been some sevens to zero. I also understand it's been some sixes to one, because it's the whole city, not just your ward. I said Starkville, Mississippi. You represent, you are leaders in Starkville, not just Ward One through Seven. And I'm not being represented. I have a wonderful alderman, but his hands get tied when it comes to working in Ward Ward Seven has an awesome alderman, but his hands get tied when it comes to the things such as the water. It's probably almost a cooldown on West Man right now. You all have the power to do something about it. And if you did that, I would be the first to applaud you, because I do not hate you, and I love living in Starkville. It was a choice for me, and I would choose it every day, because I like living here. But I also like when those who are put in position do what they were put in position to do, and that is to represent us as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tolliver. Over the last number of months, Mr. Tolliver has been coming to us, as he said, 10 months. And when it first became an issue with him, I decided that a respectful silence was probably the best approach. But we have been listening to Mr. Tolliver for the past number of months, and I feel as though he is representing that the city is treating him unfairly. And he has said so in exactly those words, pretty much, treating the north side of town unfairly. And so, while it is not our practice to respond during citizens' comments, I wish to say that that is not true. He is not being discriminated against. I believe it's time to provide what I consider to be the rest of the story associated with Mr. Tolliver's concerns, which is specifically to his issue, not a full representation of six and seven. That's not what I'm speaking to. But in the issue related to his home and his sewer problem, I want to say that the standard that we adhere to is the same for all claims, and we submit them to our insurance company. They are the responsible party as an agent for the city. There is no other method by which we handle these kinds of claims. We've not handled claims any differently all over town. Mr. Tolliver's sewer backup occurred on September the 5th of 2018. He called the city on that same day, and we responded to him on that same day. Mr. Tolliver initially told us that he would handle the cleanup of his own home. He decided two days later, on September the 7th of 2018, to file a claim with the city's insurance carrier. In responding to the problem, we discovered that the issue came from a tree that was located on Mr. Tolliver's property. The roots of that tree had grown into the metered area and entered into the main sewer line. Once the claim was filed, the city called Serv Pro to clean up the interior of the property. Serv Pro reported back to us that they were unable to do so because of the amount of items in the home. Mr. Tolliver received a letter from the carrier explaining that nothing further could be done until the contents of the house had been removed. The insurance carrier denied the claim on September 19th of 2018. They did, however, offer a sum of $3,000 to Mr. Tolliver. He rejected the insurance carrier's offer, and that was despite finding no liability on the city's part. After contacting the carrier to work with them to perhaps increase the offer of compensation, they increased it to $3,300, and that too was rejected. After almost two months had passed, at the end of October, the insurance carrier was finally able to get an appraiser into Mr. Tolliver's home. That appraisal indicated that the damage was $19,931.62. Mr. Tolliver's insurance carrier paid him $5,000, which he then accepted. In November, in a good-faith effort to settle, our insurance carrier increased their offer to $10,000, which Mr. Tolliver also rejected. As a final effort to satisfy Mr. Tolliver, the insurance carrier upped their offer to $14,931.62, which would, with Mr. Tolliver's home insurance payment, cover the cost of the repair as determined by the appraiser. Mr. Tolliver rejected that offer. I have met with Mr. Tolliver on more than one occasion and told him that his rejection of the funds is, at this point, the final action on the city's part. As of the past six months, there's been no further notice or action on Mr. Tolliver's part as it relates to resolving this issue, other than for him to come to the board meetings and say that he's been treated unfairly inequitably. And I want to say that that is absolutely not a true statement. So, that is my statement in response to that, and other than that, I now await any further citizens' comments. Okay. Seeing none, I will close it as citizens' comments. We have no public appearances tonight. We do have a public hearing. This is the first public hearing on amending the City of Starkville Stormwater Ordinance Chapter 98, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, and Appendix B subdivisions. Mr. Kemp, would you be so kind?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
There was a young lady seeking to be recognized for public citizen comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Come on up. Ms. Hill?
Greetings to the mayor.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Greetings to the mayor and the Board of Alderman. I am here again today. I spoke with you guys. My name is Jessica Hill, and I come to you on behalf of A A U W, which is American Association of University for Women, for the Starkville branch. I'm coming to you guys to ask for your help with funding for a safe house. It is Project SOS Mississippi, Starkville-Octavia County Shelter. We have one in Columbus. We do not have one in West Point, and we do have one in Starkville, which is the Golden Triangle area. Sometimes, in Columbus, they have overflow, and they can't house multiple families at the time. And so, they house up to 18 beds, 30-day maximum. We don't have a shelter here. I really do think we need a shelter, and I feel like it's a need. We have soup kitchens, which extends that we have homelessness here, and we have people who need places to stay. So, I'm asking you guys, I've submitted a proposal for external funds to help. $3,000 towards the safe house toward the support of the city. The remainder amount used for the MAD, which is Mothers Against Domestic Disturbance Starkville Day, to help with the children's part. So, every year, we have Starkville Day, and there's nothing for the children to do. So, I've placed that in my proposal. I would strongly like you guys to consider that for funding for the safe house and to support MAD, partnering with them.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for overlooking you. You kind of need to get up and wave real big. That's okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Kemp.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, rest of the board. We're happy to be here tonight. We are wanting to talk a little bit about something that my associate and I have been really working on. really working on since the end of last year, something we've been working on for over six months. And I guess before I get started, I would like to publicly just acknowledge and thank Cody, who works in the engineering department. He and I have worked on this, but he has been one of the principal authors on this. He has spent hundreds of hours, not only writing, but researching and developing conceptual schematics and plans of which you'll see tonight, and I just really want to thank him for his efforts on this. What we have tonight, we hope, is just a starting point for the conversation. We know that with any ordinance revision, there's some opportunities to refine it and to get feedback and to look for ways to improve it. I guess my intent tonight is not necessarily to go over the mechanics of stormwater, the importance of stormwater. You all have experienced stormwater issues in your wards personally. I have had many meetings with you, either looking at stormwater math or looking at stormwater drains out there on site after rain events. So I will not get into that, the theory of stormwater, the need for stormwater management. What my intent tonight was really to give an overview of the major principal differences between our current ordinance and what is being proposed right now. So I really hope that this is kind of a conversation. If you would like to stop me at any point and ask questions, feel free to do so, or wait till the end, whatever you feel most comfortable doing. But with that, I'll go ahead and jump in and wanted to give a little bit about the background of kind of where we've been to this point. We first adopted the stormwater ordinance back in 2006. Some that were on the board at that time, Vice Mayor may be able to tell a little bit more about the history of that, but as I understand it, it was principally due to some of the development happening on the west side of town and some of the impacts to some of the current neighborhoods there. It was revised back in 2010, and some of the changes went from a design storm of a 25-year event down to a two- and a 10-year storm event. And some of the applicability triggers went from a larger acreage down to a smaller acreage. But those were the primary differences that occurred about nine, eight or nine years ago. So what, tonight, again, I just want to overview some of the, I guess, the bigger impacts, the bigger changes of the ordinance as it's currently written. And I'll go through each of those individually and talk about some of the needs for those and some of the differences in the current ordinance. And then at the end, I'd like to show you some example projects and also give you a comparative chart of what other communities are doing of similar-sized cities around our state. With all of these items, understand that this is truly a policy decision. You know, it's a, we're bringing forward a proposal, if you will, but obviously, there's a balance between development and protection. And also, you want to encourage development, you want to encourage redevelopment, but you also want to protect property owners. So that is a difficult thing to do. So I would like to talk to you a little bit first about the design storm. The design storm, like I mentioned, is, our current requirements are two- and a 10-year storm event. In the proposed ordinance, we are recommending to increase that to also include the 100-year storm. So you might think, wow, we're really increasing our ordinance by 10 times what is really required right now, and that is a little bit of a misnomer. So if you look at the chart below, what we've tried to do is extrapolate out what those storm events look like from a precipitation amount over that 24-hour duration. So what we have circled in red are the current requirements, is six inches precipitation over a 24-hour period is what constitutes a 10-year storm. And then that would go up to a 9.4-inch precipitation over that same time period. And you can see what the other storm events look like. So we're looking really at like about a 50% increase in precipitation. You'll see later on what that looks like from a size and development area in an example So that's the first big one, is the design storm. The second one is on applicability. Our current applicability is for any development or redevelopment, that's two acres or larger. And then also, any new development or redevelopment that's between one acres and two acres and having 50% or greater impervious surfaces, that's your roads, your parking lots, your rooftops. What we've found is pretty much everything that's being developed in Starkville right now, between one and two acres, is greater than that 50%, simply because everybody's trying to develop it to the maximum extent possible. So nearly always, you're triggering that if it's greater than one acre. What we've also seen, like I mentioned in the work session a few weeks ago, is that we've also seen a lot of .8, .9, .95. We'll show an example tonight of a .98-acre development that was not triggered by this and what some of the impacts of that look like. So what of our proposed applicability, and I guess what I'm saying on this is, there is a compounding effect on the applicability. When you have these smaller sites, whether they be a quarter acre or just under an acre, and they accumulate, that can make a big impact for downstream property owners. So what is in the proposed ordinance right now is that the two acres or greater would not change, but that the second trigger would be reduced down to a half to two acres and greater than 50% impervious. The third thing is, we're asking developers to look at the impacts downstream. This is something that's in our current ordinance. And you might say, well, if you're meeting the stormwater ordinance as far as the amount of flow that you're releasing from your site, you're good, right? Well, that is good in some ways, and that's part of the stormwater management. But what we're trying to do is look at how it impacts the overall basin. So if you think about a predevelopment before any kind of development occurs, the amount of water might be leaving a site, you could kind of replicate that into a five-gallon bucket. And you're going to release that water in a one-inch hole in that bucket. Well, when you develop and you add a lot of impervious surface, that water volume might be the size of a bathtub. And so you're releasing it out of that same one-inch hole, out of the bottom of the bathtub. What you wind up doing, though, is you release that water for a lot longer period of time. You're still releasing the same amount, but it's released for a much longer period of time. And how that impacts is when you think about the overall basin itself, and you're adding that additional flow over a longer period of time, it can accumulate with other tributaries of that basin and exceed some of the available capacities of the infrastructure. So that's kind of a thing that we would like to look at and make sure that those peaks of that overall basin are not causing significant impacts downstream. What we have done is tried to put these in two different types of development categories. One is for a smaller-type development, between two and 20 acres. It would only look 500 feet downstream. And then those larger developments, those that are over 20 acres, those would follow a pretty well-established practice that's outlined in the Georgia Stormwater Manual, it's called the 10% Rule. And basically, what you're looking at is a point of interest that's located at a point downstream where the development size constitutes 10% of the overall basin. The other thing that we...
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Go back to this unit we're finna do now where it's a 20-plus, 7.5 acres. Okay? What is that stormwater? So it won't fit in this right here because we're going to have to go buy all the water that we got, right?
Correct.
The 79 units that we're getting ready to approve. So what is that going to do to what we already got a lot of stormwater problems? What is that going to do? What effect that going to have on city?
On the proposed project? You know, I think that there will be some impacts. And I've indicated that as much in the staff report. To what extent that is going to be impacted, I'm not sure. I don't think you'll know that without some type of an analysis, but there will be probably some downstream impacts.
How many acres involved in this project is all you're talking about?
20.75.
Just over 20.
Just over 20.
The other thing that we've looked at and really tried to encourage from a development standpoint is, we want to make our stormwater management areas more of an amenity, and not only for that development, but also for the community. And so things to think about are there ways that we can encourage certain types of design to make that more pleasing from an aesthetic standpoint? So what we're trying to do is prevent these, what I call the square Walmart detention ponds. And I can say that sometimes, you know, engineers, and I can criticize my own profession sometimes, are not very creative. You know, they try to liken squares and boxes and that type of thing. But thinking about it from a, again, from an aesthetic standpoint, is like we would really want the detention stormwater management areas to be located behind the development, at the back of the development, if possible, but obviously, topo and the lay of the land doesn't always allow that. So we're asking that if it is located right adjacent to right-of-way, that we provide some, you know, a shallower pond, a more gentle side slopes. And what you see up there in the top right-hand corner is one example that recently has been built in Starkville that's located at the intersection of Lynn Lane and Lewisville Street, the new gas station there. They did a really good job, not only with their grading of their pond, but also providing some enhanced landscaping there that I think has really brought an amenity to that corner. And the image below is located at the Clayborne there, and that's a retention pond, so it's meant to hold water permanently. And you can just see that, you know, they have built amenity aspects to that development that addresses and incorporates the use of that pond. You can see the sitting areas and the walkways there. So trying to think of it more as that, as opposed to just this hole in the ground. And so you'll see some of that in the ordinance. The other thing, and I guess from a priority standpoint, I guess this is probably pretty low on our list as far as our priorities, but one thing to think about, you know, most of what we've talked about so far is new developments on new sites, for example. But, you know, one policy thought is, the projects that are currently contributing to stormwater issues that have essentially been grandfathered in before the 2006 or 2010 revisions, do they have any responsibility to help reduce or mitigate any of the stormwater runoff for them, for those projects? And so what we've done is we've added a small section in there about redevelopment. And we initially put in there about trying to go up to reduce to the 70% of the runoff of what it currently is. But you'll see in some of the exhibits that we show in a little bit, after we started really kind of crunching the numbers, we think that that number, that 70%, is actually a little bit unfeasible. So if the board chooses from a policy standpoint to include redevelopment-type projects in the ordinance's requirements, we may want to think about bumping that up to 80 or 90% or just making sure that it doesn't exceed the predevelopment. That would be kind of the baseline. So that's the last thing. So how does this ordinance stack up with what other communities are currently doing? So we did some research, and I want to give credit to our intern, Ben Stroud, who's with us tonight as well. He did a lot of research through MutiCode and talked to some of these communities as well. We tried to put together a chart so you could see exactly what other communities are doing. And you can see, we've basically broken it down just to the applicability and design storm, because those are really the two big ones that affect the development patterns most as far as the size of the ponds. And you can see that there's quite a lot of differences on that, and it varies on that applicability pretty substantially. We do have a copy of this that we're going to provide for you so you can study it a little bit more, but that kind of gives you an idea of what some of the other communities are doing. So what we'd like to do now is just talk a little bit about three different scenarios. And we'll go through this pretty quickly, and what those potential impacts would look like from the different stormwater ordinance impact. So this first one is a development that was approved in the city last year. It's located over in Ward One. I can't remember the street that it's on.
Guest Drive.
Yeah, Guest Drive. And this project was .98 acres, the boundary was. So it did not meet the trigger for any kind of stormwater management. So if you go out there today and it's currently under construction, there's no stormwater management or mitigation on this project. So what we tried to do is mimic what, if the current ordinance as it's written right now, what those different pond sizes would look like. And you can see those over here, and actually, Cody, if you want to pass these out, we have these printed out too for the board, so you can take these and look at them. But this red box here would be the equivalent of a 10-year storm, the pond requirements for that. The green would be a 50-year storm, and then the blue would be a 100-year storm. Again, this is obviously very tight, squeezed in on the development, but can be obviously fit in there without any impacts to the development itself. Now, obviously, we just put a very prototypical square, you know, I was talking earlier about 10 years like squares, but we were just trying to do something relatively quickly without a lot of design that goes into it, see what that would look like. What you'll see up in the top left-hand corner of that also, you'll see that what we've tried to do is give the pond volume and the surface area for each of those different scenarios, 10, 50, and 100, and also what that footprint would include from a percentage of the overall site. So you can see a 10-year storm is 5.5% of the overall site, a 50 is 7%, and a 100-year The second scenario is a residential subdivision. So this is about a 12-acre development. This is a development known as Portico. It's up on the north side of town, just right off of Gare Road, if you turn off of Old West Point Road. It's a new development that's actually under construction right now. Their pond was actually designed for a 100-year storm event, and that area is included in this outside blue shape right here. So what we did is we took this existing development and determined what the different-sized ponds would look like. And as you can see, the difference between 100 and 50 in this scenario, just mostly due to the pond shape, is relatively the same. The green line is really kind of hard to distinguish from the blue, and then the red line is just kind of the triangular shape of the larger pond area there. Again, obviously, with a larger site, the percentage of the pond footprint goes down. I think the geometry of it also makes a big impact, but you can see that the 10-year storm is 3.8%, I believe, the 50 is 5%, and the 100 is 5.4%. The last scenario is the redevelopment scenario, and this is the existing Burger King site there on Highway 12. If you all remember, for a long time, it was Barn Hills, and that site was pretty much, Quincy's before that, I believe, wasn't it, Vice Mayor? It was fully paved for the most part. As you can see, this is what their site plan, as it currently exists, looks like. They had to meet the landscape ordinance, so there was some planting islands that had to be built. And this site, based on its predevelopment condition, simply because the site was fully built out, actually reduced their runoff by a good amount just by installing the landscape islands to meet the landscape ordinance. But what you see here is what we've tried to do is develop three different scenarios for trying to get back to that predevelopment flow, which you'll see in the orange down here is if you use these areas just as stormwater management as well, you know, you could also incorporate landscaping in those, that would reduce it and get it up to about 90% of the predevelopment flow, which is still a good amount of area needed. Now, if you go to the 80%, it's going to take all of the yellow area plus the green areas here and some underground storage pipes in the parking lot as well. So again, you're starting to really incur more costs when you start doing underground storage. And then to meet the 70%, like I was saying earlier, which may not be feasible, I mean, it's obviously feasible. it's obviously feasible, but where's the balance on encouraging the redevelopment? You may, you may be over the tipping point when you start trying to get to 70% because you're, you're talking about two and a half runs of 30-inch pipe in the parking lot plus all the landscape islands there. So this is a 1.2-acre site, and kind of what a, what a redevelopment might look like in that scenario. So, that's all I have. I would be happy to answer any questions about these or the ordinance itself.
Do we have any questions of Mr. Kemp? Any highlighted elements that, other than ones that you provided, that were, that are changing from our existing ordinance?
Ma'am.
Anything else that you highlight that's changing from our existing ordinance?
Well, the, the.
Or proposed changing from our existing?
Yeah, the ordinance is, is a, pretty much a complete rewrite. I mean, so it is, it is, there wasn't a, a lot of bones from the old ordinance that were brought over. So there is, there is quite a lot of change. We did include, and it's included in your packet as well, a stormwater manual, report manual. So what we've tried to do is list out everything that we would look for from the designer when they submit a project to make sure that the information that they provide meets the ordinance requirement. So we've tried to outline that in a very simplified bullet point-type listing. So there's not a lot of review, re-review, re-submittals, and we can hopefully expedite the, the review and approval process too.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, any questions of Mr. Kemp?
Could you just go back?
I'm sorry. I saw Alderman call over first, I apologize, and then Alderman walked off.
I'm going to listen to his question first.
Not so much a question, could we go back to the, the comparison table of other places? And so, you know, I, I think when, when we first got this, the idea of thinking about the 100-year event, I think certainly brings up questions about, you know, is that the right one? But seeing other cities are doing that, I, I think is helpful for me to see that that's something that may not be that, that big of a stretch. One of the things that, just reading the, the bullet points, we're looking at, I guess it's in, in Brandon, right now, y'all picked a number where is every, a half an acre is sort of the trigger, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I think that, that may be fine, but what, looking at that, I, I like the part where it's maybe it's all development that's greater than 50% impervious. I would just be curious, what is that, you know, even if we're talking about a half-acre or less site, if it's going to determine that it's going to be primarily, the majority of the site is going to be impervious surface, if we're talking about a cumulative effect, what impact might that, might that have? So that, that's the one thing on, on the chart that, that I would, you know, like to have some further discussion about if we, we started and we know we went to the change from the, because the .98 wasn't meeting the 1, well, is the, the 22,000, the 50%, is that really going to, to catch what we, what we're looking for, especially if we're talking about areas that are going to be in the more densely developing parts of town that may be, that may be under that half an acre in size? Is a potential trigger like that of 50% or 75% impervious surface, something that may be a reasonable attachment along with the acreage?
I think it's a good thing to think about for sure. Like I mentioned, the development, development patterns that we're seeing, in particular for the smaller sites, you're way over the 50% threshold, maybe. So, when you, when you put that lower number, you might as well be saying it's pretty much going to trigger it. And, and we talked about that lower number a good bit. I think, I think it is a policy decision you need to think about too, like, once you get so small, you know, are you even physically able to do any kind of stormwater management without it completely going underground? And it may be going underground anyway with a half an acre. You know, we, we've talked a lot about, you know, long-term of what underground storage and underground stormwater mitigate, management looks like, and it's probably not the best long-term solution, just simply because there is a lifetime of pipe systems and, you know, they have to require maintenance and things like that. So, but, but yeah, I mean, we can, we can certainly continue to think about.
Well, I just think that would be something that, you know, similar to maybe some of these scenarios, if we had maybe one more that looked at some scenario like that, see you, if that, if that's going to help move the needle at all, I think that would be the, the one piece that I would look at. I don't have, this isn't a question, but I think, commend the, the ordinance looking at the, referencing the Stormwater Manual, which is a gold standard for the, at least the southeastern United States for looking at best management practices and how to do that. I think that would go a long way for improving the, the product that, that we get. So I commend the ordinance for including that. I think that's very good and a move in the, in the right direction. I think it is a policy decision. I think, I'm hopeful that people are going to get into this and, and look at it and know that even this code as adopted's not going to mean that there's never going to be any more stormwater management issues in the city of Starville. There still will be, but I think this certainly could be an improvement that would help mitigate some of the events that we've seen in the more recent past. So I think this is a good step in the right direction.
Alderman, Carter?
I guess that's part of what I was going to ask. I'd like to, I have a little reservation of the, with the jump from 10 to 100 years. And while that was a good chart going from 100-year, 24-hour period, you know, it doesn't go exponentially to 60, but still the 9.4. I would like to see another set of charts. I see a lot of 25s and 50s up here. I guess from our side as a board and mayor, we probably get a lot of calls just from the development community. I don't want to do anything that would impede small developments. I do like some of the things that, I, I like how you're, I do like how it goes down to a half an acre, just because you and I spoke a lot about some of the stormwater issues we've had this year, and I think you kind of sold me on the fact that a little, a lot of little small developments add up the same amount of impervious surface as one grand project that, you know, anytime you take, create water runoff, you know, it goes to the, to the basin at the end. So, I, I just would maybe request if you could send me personally to the board, you know, some 50-year figures as well, to see. I don't want to do anything as a board, and that would put out a reputation or anything that we're trying to hinder development on any scale, large or small, so. But I appreciate it again, like Alderman Walker said, the work y'all did and, and working on this today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, 50-year look, Mr. Kemp, okay? Anyone else other end of the table? Any questions or anything? Okay, Alderman Sistrung?
I'd just like to, to confirm some things that I think I know, and I'd like for you to tell me or correct me if I'm, if I'm not right. But we talk about 100-year flood, and that's a, an engineering phenomenon, right, that references how much rain we get over a period of time. And it, and it can be six inches over 24 hours, or it may be four inches in two hours, right?
That's great, it's a theoretical, it is totally dependent on time.
And it's, and it's not a, there feel like there have been more of these kinds of events that approached that 100-year flood or 100-year event over the last several years. Do y'all have any numbers to support? Is, is there any data that would tell us how often we do hit the 50-year number or the 100-year number? And I know that's a, a difficult thing, y'all are not meteorologists, so is, is that information available?
We, we've actually researched to try to find that information, because we get that question quite often after a big rain event, like, even like we had this afternoon, what is that storm event? You know, it rained really hard for 30 minutes, you know? And what we have found, you know, we, we've talked with Mississippi State and some of their rain collection data, we've looked at NOAA's website, we, we've done quite a bit of research on trying to capture that data. And most of the data that we can capture will give us a precipitation volume, but the volume is over a 24-hour period. And what you really need is to collect that data over a much smaller time increment, even five minutes, 10 minutes, 15 minutes. And you could say, okay, well, like this afternoon, we got an inch and a half in 30 minutes, you know, or 20 minutes or whatever that, you then could extrapolate that out to what exactly storm that is. But if you only have the data over a 24-hour period, it's harder to, it's harder to tell exactly what that intensity is. So, the only way, the only way to do that, and we've actually had some conversations about this, is to set up our own data collection system. And those are, those are relatively inexpensive, something that we could set up to try to capture some of that precipitating volume over time.
And, and whatever we do, this, this will not be our last, our last chance to amend a stormwater ordinance. So if we started low or high on that, and we got data that indicated we needed to adjust our numbers up or down, we could, we can certainly address that in the future. But it does, from the flooding issues that we see, the problems that we see, it is, it is not those two and 10-year events that are causing us problems, it is those, and I don't know where they fall on the spectrum, but those, those really torrential rains that, that we have periodically that, that are problematic and, and harder to address.
All right.
I just.
Alderman Beatty?
Go back to Burger King Development on 12, and kind of explain what they did to mitigate, based on the old stormwater, existing stormwater requirement versus what they would have to have done had this new ordinance been.
Right, so this, this development did trigger the stormwater ordinance, because it's greater than one acre and it's more than 50% impervious. But what they were able to show is that the site was previously nearly 100% paved, either rooftops, parking, sidewalks, et cetera, curbs. So in order, when they redid their site plan, they had to install these, all the areas that are white in the, in the site plan there are landscaping. So when you remove pavement and you, you replace it with grass or landscape islands.
Yeah, gate runoff, right.
Your, yeah, your runoff volume, your runoff amount goes down. And so they were able to prove through that exercise that the, the actual runoff post-development was less than pre-development.
Okay. Okay, all right.
And under the new ordinance, we would require what compared with now?
I, I think that's up for discussion.
That's what we're trying to turn it down.
Yeah, like, do we, do we simply want to, to make sure that it's less? Do we want to make sure that it's less plus something, you know?
Is there any correlation between the 10% reduction, 20% reduction, 30% reduction with a 10, 20, and 100-year, I mean, the 10, 20, and 100-year? There, there's no, there's no correlation?
These are all based on the 100-year storm.
Okay.
Yeah, so we arbitrarily pick the percentages, you know, it, it would be next to, it would be very, very difficult.
And what are these closed detention things on the left that would have been required?
Underground piping that are, that are basically used to store.
With French drain of some way.
Large, I think these were 30-inch sized pipes, so large pipes that essentially flood, the water slowly released out.
Thanks.
All right, if there are no other questions of the board members, I'm going to open it up as a public hearing, because this is our first public hearing on amending the stormwater ordinance, and we will be having another one at the next board meeting. So, anyone who wishes to come speak either for or against, now is your opportunity to do so, if anyone wishes to speak either for or against. Anybody passionate about stormwater? Okay, all right. Seeing, seeing no one, I will close it as a public hearing. Anything further of Mr. Kemp before I move on?
I just got a couple comments.
Alderman, Carter.
I tell you, I think everybody on this board gets out, and our greatest fear is when it rains hard. Our system works as long as it's anything steady, in my opinion, and what, where it fails is anything intense for short amounts of time. And I think that's most noticeable by the rate that the water goes down. It rises fast and it leaves fast, and so sometimes you come back in a matter of two hours later and it's gone. I've seen entire streets flooded, most recently in South Montgomery and that area, and you and I met, and, but I would say, you know, I think our greatest concern is anything intense and fast, we're failing at, at that point. But I would tell you publicly, you and I have done a lot of work together over 10 years, and he just called me this last rain event, and there's been about four significant areas that have been improved, so I'd just like to say thank you. People notice, and, you know, I know what, what areas they are, but thank you for those and solving those problems, so it definitely has helped, and anything I can help anybody else on this board do from the stormwater. But I do again, just thank you for those three I'm thinking of off the top of my head that have been to the top, so thank you.
Well, and one of the things that I'll just go ahead and cite, because, you know, when we have people, and people don't think about this, but if you cut your grass and you don't pick up the clippings and you leave it in the street, it clogs up the storm grain, grates, and then water can't get in the grates, which is what they're intended to do. So, you know, if you see storm grates that are clogged up, you can either clean them out yourself, which I certainly have done, and I know others have as well, or you can call us and let us know where they are, and we try to do that periodically when we know we've got a large storm event coming, which we did this past week. We had people out for two days, roughly Thursday and Friday, they were out cleaning out stormdrains, particularly in areas that we know where we have low-lying and, and there are problems. So, but that's one of the ways that just as a regular citizen walking the street, you can, you know, you can make a difference, and you can help, and, and that's kind of what makes Starville special, is we have people who do those sorts of things. So, it's just some simple stuff like that that will make a difference. But yes, there are certain areas around town where we have issues, and we continue to search for ways to solve them, and cleaning out those storm drains from silt and that sort of thing is, is a part of that. So, thank you to all of our employees who work in ways that, that are seen and unseen to keep those things happening. So, all right, if there's nothing further, then we will have a, I'm sorry, Alderman Vaughn, you see your hand.
May I forgive me? I'm looking over the agenda, I see that, is, is it too late to reorder the agenda? Because I see, I see behind this, this school, this school vacancy, we still have something coming up on the planet, is it too late to move this up before that?
If you, if you would like to make that motion, you certainly may do so, Alderman Vaughn, what?
Move up on the plan and move the, item B up before, before, right now, let's move it up now.
You, you were wishing to move the preliminary plat discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Up to right now, after this public hearing here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do I have a, a second to that motion?
Sir.
I got several. Alderman Beatty, I believe I heard your voice. All right, anything further, any other discussion? Alderman Sistrung?
And may I offer a friendly amendment, that after we do the planning issue, that, after we do the planning issue, that we do the school board, because Mr. Gordon's children have been troopers, but.
I'll sell. I'll sell.
Okay, all right. That being the case, we will reorder to the extent that we will take up the planning item, and then after that, we will stake, take up the school board appointments, and City Clerk, if you will, okay, if the City Clerk will show those changes. Alderman Beatty, see your hand.
May I make a common suggestion? If, if we need to do the school board to go ahead and expedite so we can have time to talk about this, this item, Alderman Vaughn, would you consider withdrawing that so that we would have sufficient time after the school board performance been made, and we can wade into this pretty good?
Okay, so you're wanting to make a friendly amendment to reverse those, those two?
Alderman Vaughn, understanding that you're, you're concerned for that, if we could get the school board appointment out of the way, and then we'll wade into this thing, because I know it's important to you, would you consider that? It's got, I think if we take it now, we're just going to shorten up, because we, we're feeling compelled to get this over.
Oh, you want to take the school board now?
And then let's, let's get into this other.
Well, we're going to spend more time on the school board, that's why I was looking at, we're going to spend more time on school.
Okay, well, let's go with what we've got right now, and if, and if that, if, if that passes, then that's the way it'll be, and if not, then you can come back and make, make your motion, okay? All right, as it stands right now, I have a motion for us to take first the, the planning item, followed by the school board matter. I have a second from that. Any further discussion? All right, all those of making that a change to the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that was by five to one, motion carries, so we will be taking the next matter up to be taken will be the planning item, which is PP 19-03, Request for Preliminary Plat Approval for Subdividing a Plus or Minus 20.75-Acre Parcel into 79 Lots on the West Side of South Montgomery Street, Plus or Minus 330 Feet South of the Intersection with Lynn Lane in the R3A Zoning District with parcel numbers on and on and on and on. Mr. Havlin.
Yes, this is a request by any foreign name for preliminary plat. It is a 20.75-acre parcel with 79 lots on it. The parcel is located in an R3A zoning district on the west side of South Montgomery, directly south of Mason to Bill Subdivision. The applicant is also applied for a variance from front setback requirements. This request is to reduce the front setback for all 79 lots from 25 to 15 feet. The Board of Adjustment Appeals will hear this request on July 24th, and if recommended for approval, it would come before y'all on August 6th. The subdivision has a gross density of 3.81 units per acre. The applicant will submit for infrastructure plan review to the Valverde Review Committee upon approval of the preliminary plat. upon approval of the preliminary plat. On November 6th, 2018, the Board of Alderman resumed the property from R1C2 to R3A with eight conditions. Those conditions are up here in the writing and read as kind of a comment on the conditions. Most of the conditions have been met or will be reviewed as part of infrastructure plan review. The traffic, a traffic impact study was submitted by the applicant as part of the plat review. The study was then reviewed by a third party. The applicant's consultant, Kim Lee Horn, also responded to comments issued by the third-party reviewer. The engineering department is recommending that the developer install a slotted curve along South Montgomery as recommended in the traffic impact study. Attachment boards on the screen now is the example of the, how the slotted curve would sit. I think there might be some minor modifications to it for the final design, but the general principle is there. There are 10 recommended conditions by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Commissions are, conditions 1 through 9 are pretty standard conditions for any preliminary plat. Condition 10 directly relates to the traffic impact study for the right-in and right-out access along South Montgomery that was just shown with that slotted curve. If there is any questions?
And that is like a curb? It's not like the median that's on, on South Montgomery across from Renasant or beside Renasant?
Similar to what's on Highway 12, the slotted concrete curb.
Just making sure I was clear on that. Okay, any questions, Mr. Havlin?
There's not so much question. Could we go back and look at that, the, right there? So just help me understand, so we're eliminating a, it's going to be a right-in, right-out only? So traffic that's moving to the south can access the development?
Correct.
And so they would, there's still a turn lane? So how, how does the turn lane function in the three-lane highway in this scenario?
So just, just to the north of this, it actually becomes the turn lane. Just to the north of this, it actually becomes the turn lane for the westbound turn lane on, for Lynn Lane. But in this area here is essentially what is called a two-way turn lane. So it's, it's able to have left turns, particularly to the properties on the east side of the street. And it would essentially still operate the same as that. They, those property owners could still utilize that center turn lane, enter that prior to the slotted curb and then enter their properties.
Okay, so that's my question, I just want to make sure. So somebody traveling north to south, wanting to go into, what was the street right there? Can't read it.
Such a private driveway?
Private driveway. So I can go north to south and I can get in the, the center lane and I can still make that left-hand turn?
Yes, yeah, it's currently what they do now. It's, they may wind up staying in that center turn lane a little bit longer than they would right now.
So the, so the only impact this has is it prevents somebody from being in that lane from going, turning left onto South Montgomery out of the development?
Correct, and a left end as well. A northbound left, I mean, yeah, northbound left into the development.
So this, the inbound, you can inbound, you can make a left turn into this property northbound on, on South Montgomery, is that sound? Is that correct?
No.
You cannot?
You're going down to South Montgomery.
You've got to go up to Lynn Lane and come into main.
Come into Lynn Lane.
So these are two exit lanes, correct?
Correct. Well, just, well, one entry.
I mean, an entry lane and an exit lane.
An exit lane, correct.
All right, is the applicant here? Okay. The applicant and all his, all his associated friends.
We've got a bunch tonight.
Okay, all right. Do you have anything you'd like to add to any of what you've seen or any discussion points?
Not particularly. I think Daniel's done a great job of explaining what we're here to talk about tonight. We would just be glad to answer any questions you all have. Henry Minor, Kim Lee Horn, land planner, landscape architect. Clyde Richards, our civil engineer. We also have one of our engineers who helped on the traffic report. And then of course, Andy Fournay and her counsel. Gordon Flowers is here as well.
Okay, all right. Any questions, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Attorney, I was, haven't had an opportunity to talk here. I've been in court since whenever. But I saw something, I read something about the commission that as far as I wanted to ask you about. Had some discussion about some legal requirements. I just, not against it, but I just want you to elaborate on the discussion that took place before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And they had about a couple of conditions that I think there was some public report I saw where, you know, the, yeah, here it is, that you had some concern. Just elaborate on that a little bit so that we can have, you just can hear that and just tell us what your thoughts are, are legally and where you stand from a legal perspective. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. In the original staff report in the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Kemp recommended two additional conditions. They were conditions 11 and 12. And it was requested of the developer that they do conditions 11 and 12 as a best engineering practice. And the developer declined to do those conditions. And I advised the Planning and Zoning Commission that those conditions were based on provisions that are going to be in the city's future ordinance, but they're not in the current ordinance. So the city had no enforcement power over the developer to make or compel the developer to do that. So then the Planning and Zoning Commission struck those two conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Alderman Sistrunk.
We are all hyper-aware of drainage issues these days. And our, our current stormwater ordinance does require that you manage the two and 10-year rain events, which, which you have clearly addressed. And, and our concern are for those bigger rains that, that create problems. I want to be sure that I'm understanding a couple of things correctly. The adjacent property that water will flow from this development onto is currently undeveloped. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, so, so at this point, there's not that much likelihood that we will impact existing structures. We, we are, if we have a new stormwater ordinance next month, there could be some potential that they will have to manage your, your runoff if and when they ever develop that area.
You're right. The property adjacent to the south, it will discharge post-development.
Okay.
And it lacks definition as far as drainage now.
Mr. Pritchard, I'm sorry, could you?
Yeah, the folks can't hear.
The property adjacent to us to the south is currently undeveloped. And where our runoff would be directed to, from our pond, which is on the southwest corner of this property. That receiving area currently lacks definitions as far as a defined channel that could accept.
So it just goes into a field?
It goes everywhere. And we, we, you know, we spoke to Planning and Zoning about that. And then there are cottages, I'll say, on to the south of that. And if you looked at some of the videos we took in some of the storm events that you've referenced, that water just spills over curbs, it's in parking lot, it just kind of goes at random where it will. So yes, we, we have complied. I'll, I'll compliment Cody again, he's had a lot of that tonight. But he's, he's been very good to deal with and we've reviewed all our drainage calculations. And we currently comply with the ordinance as, as is. If I could, Alderman Perkins, one of the second conditions that were requested is that we look at a downstream analysis, which is part of your ordinance revision. And we did that and there are some inadequacies there and that. But the part that we had a problem with is we were compelled to make improvements on properties that we didn't own or control. And that put our developer in a, in a very, and, and your engineer in a very precarious position to do. So we, we feel very comfortable with our drainage. We encourage you to pursue your ordinance changes. Your question was a fair one earlier, but, you know, I, I translate that as to how many of these 100-year storm events have we actually had?
They're awful when they happen, but.
That's a fair question, have we had?
I, I think when you research that, Alderman Beatty, you're going to find out you really haven't had very many events that meet the 100-year 24-hour that you're looking to adopt.
And in the last five years, have we had any 50 or 100-year rain or events that do?
I think that's what Edward was saying, is that we're not really.
We don't have the data that you can say.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have anything.
But you do have data that would suggest whether you've had 9.4 inches in a 24-hour period. That's pretty easy to come up to. So I would, I would encourage you to look at that. And intensity is certainly part of it.
And that's, that, that does tend to be the problem. Yes, we might not have had 9.4 inches in a 24-hour period, but we may have had 4 inches in a 1-hour period, which is, it overwhelms almost any existing stormwater management. I'd like to compliment the developer. And, and this is always a balancing act with cities and developers to, to grow in a responsible fashion and to not be onerous with our regulations. Y'all have been exceptional so far in, in terms of the information you've provided, the, the work that you've done. It's really been above and beyond and, and I appreciate that. And what I want to be sure, I, I don't want to, to create a problem down the line. But what I want to be sure is that we have not left any avenues unexplored in our current ordinance for, for managing this beyond the two and the 10-year event. And I, I had asked this question previously of Mr. Latimer and, and Mr. Kemp. And I think there's a, while it doesn't impact the plat approval, I think that we may have an opportunity during the design review process to take this a step further in terms of managing that stormwater runoff.
That's true.
And, and would we address that in, in this approval process within a condition? Or we would just know that that's there and can, can be dealt with at the design review process?
It would be dealt with procedurally at the design review process and final plating.
Okay.
Well, and let's be a little clearer because I'm not sure what you're, what you're saying, so.
At the, I, I believe at the design review process, they can ask them to, to look at runoff for a 25-year storm event.
Okay, so that's what you were talking about? Okay, just want to make sure that everybody understood what we're saying. All right, Alderman Carver, I saw your hand, and then Alderman Beatty, I saw you.
Just one thing I'd say, provided me a lot of relief looking at this was the fact that this does not contribute, correct me if I'm wrong, this does not contribute toward the same tributary that Turnberry is on. This is going to head out to Lynn Lane extended west. And why, we talked about, or you talked about in that, in that, of course, these, I don't know that this is going straight into that residential area which you've had. Is that correct in saying that?
This, this, this is a, would drain into Hollis Creek, which is the large creek that goes by Stubble Hill, Stubble Cave. The other one is Skinner Creek, which kind of, now they all kind of converge at some point further downstream.
Right.
From, from, from our standpoint, they are, they're different basins.
Thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
You indicated that if y'all were being compelled to do the 100-year stormwater mitigation, that you'd had to get on, on someone else's property. Tell me, I'm new to boards.
No, no, sir, I mean.
Well, you could, you could do that on, on existing property. What all would it entail to, to take this from a 20-year to a 100, I mean, as far as?
Well, if you look now at the light green section in the back, that, that stormwater detention facility is designed, basically takes all of that space and we're trying to have an amenities building there with some parking and some space. If we go to 100-year, and, and Henry, you put it in for me. We're looking at probably losing one to two lots at least, plus our amenities space in there. You know, the, the discharge rate is virtually the same. So we just build a bigger hole, basically what we do.
And the, I guess the other part of it, just to expand on it, is, you know, one of the, I think one of the great parts of the ordinance that y'all are considering is, is maybe having some kind of aesthetic design considerations. And so with the, the retention pond we have now, we're really able to make it an amenity to where it's going to have a constant pool of water in it. It's one of the features of this development. There's going to be a, a pool by it with a, with a poolhouse. And so if we're forced to, to make, basically, you know, comply with the 100-year, a lot of that's going to be compromised just because all of that's going to have to be sacrificed for more storage.
The thing that concerns me, and I guess I'm one of the oldest, I'm one of the old heads on the board, but I remember when Hurricane Katrina, you know, happened 12, 14 years ago, next month. We had 8 or 10 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. I can remember back before then when Lewis, Mississippi, they had 12 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. And those are unusual events, but if we had one of those, would this compromise something? And, and our, the ability to retain this and let that outflow be, you know, be relieved in a, in a, I guess, over a long period of time or something? Would it compromise that to where we would get water? I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, is the difference between doing this for a 20-year or 25-year and 100-year, we don't plan for the, or any circumstances that may have occurred even, well, in the last 35 years. We plan for something kind of Katrina, Hurricane Katrina-related in one of these other extremities where we get 8 or 10 or 12. I mean, it's happened before, I remember. And I just would, we've had, and I've only been on the board a month and a half, but I, I've heard and talked to people and there's been flooding in South Stubble. It's happened because, I don't know, maybe the developers didn't put large enough infrastructure in to handle it. Maybe because we just didn't know, but, but it was compromising. We had water in houses and things like that. And if an event like that happened, could we, could the water be handled in such a way that it wouldn't affect a development or somebody's property, somebody named it downstream from it? That's question one. Question two would be, if you do this and, and at some point in time with the developer, the people that have the property next to you, will they incur having to mitigate or handle water because of some additional discharge or something that would have been done because of this development?
If I can respond, number one, the pond as designed now would not handle a Katrina-type event.
And that's the 100-year event, right?
And, well, Katrina may have actually been, and I'd have to go back a little.
500-year?
It may have been a 500-year event. But keep in mind, when you talk about 100-year storm, it's not just, you know, it has a 1% of occurrence in a, in a year, so it's.
It's kind of like insurance, though, we don't, we buy insurance for that.
You buy, you buy insurance for that. And as your staff aptly put, it's a policy decision for the board whether you're going to virtually require, you know, 100% design for a 1% event. That's what you're faced with. But to answer your question, no, we couldn't handle a Katrina-type event.
There's just a lot of development south of this thing, because we're, everybody.
As, as Mr. Havlin appropriately mentioned in the Planning and Zoning Commission, what this does do for your property to the south is it gives them a fixed point of discharge. We can tell them, now they know where the water's coming. It's not coming everywhere, it's coming out here and it's coming out this rate. And should they develop in the future, then it becomes their responsibility to, to accommodate that flow and whatever they do in their development. I know Attorney Flowers isn't here, and I turned it to Latimer, but if you take all of this back far enough, it goes to Old English law. I mean, basically, we're charged not to rob water from our neighbor or to discharge any more water to our neighbor. We're supposed to keep that balance as close as we can, and that's what we're trying to do.
Alderman Carver, I saw your hand.
Well, I was just going to offer a motion to call the question and, and offer in debate and offer a motion if, I think Alderman Walker might have had his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Pritchard, so you said that there's going to be, the retention ponds, the amenity is the defined area where water is going to be exiting the site to the south and to the west?
And not to interrupt you, but we're, we're sort of fortunate in this site, Jason, and that almost all the drainage comes from northeast to southwest.
The one question I have is I know that there is an existing drainage channel that's probably, I don't know, somewhere in the neighborhood of about a third of the way down that site that drains in between the existing fire station and the, the church property?
Yeah.
Right there, and so how much of, how much of this development is, how, what impact of that drainage channel with the development have? Or is it primarily, or is all of that water, other than what falls on those lots, going to your retention?
Virtually all of the water except from what's on the south row of lots. And a portion of that will drain north to the street. But I would say roughly half of the south row of lots will still drain to the south.
That existing drainage channel?
Right, to the existing drainage. And that's the area that I mentioned goes toward the cottages and stuff down there where it's just sheet drainage now, that they have issue with.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Carver, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I was going to echo what Alderman Sistrunk said, that just to approve the applicants for, or commend the applicants for what y'all have done through this process and you've been a pleasure to work with. So I would like to make a motion with the 10 conditions listed.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Carver for the approval of the plat with the 10 conditions as listed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you have a second?
Mayor, I'll be happy to make a second, but can we go back?
Mayor, I'll be happy to make a second, but can we go back to those conditions real quick? The only one, if Alderman Carver would agree on condition number 10, I would like to say developer install a slotted curb or approved equivalent along South Montgomery as part of infrastructure plans in a manner similar to shown on attachment four.
What would be the equivalent, I'm just asking?
And this is just me talking out loud, I would say, when we talk about that slotted curb, that is a concrete poured into the, into the center, and while I think these studies may be perfect, and it may get put down in exactly the right spot, I would, I wouldn't be opposed to something that may be more like wheel stops or some other measure that could be put in to still function like a slotted curb, but I think that's why I would put the approved equivalent and let the engineer and folks sort that out at Design Review Committee.
I concur.
Okay, that's, that's an accepted, so I have a motion and a second. Second from Alderman Walker with that adjustment to the language, city clerk, do you have that? Okay, any further discussion? Alderman Sistrum, I see your hand.
And just, just to be dead clear about this, the developer, his engineer have met all the legal requirements of our stormwater ordinance as it currently stands, and we have a slight opportunity at the design review stage to take a second look at that and maybe consider the 25-year storm.
Alderman Sistrum, as far as meeting the legal requirements, you know, the stormwater ordinance talks about various metrics related to flow and discharge, I did not go behind the engineer to check those numbers, but, but as far as what we're asking him to do and what they did, that does comport with the current version of the stormwater ordinance.
If I could add, Alderman Sistrum, you correct me if I'm wrong, but the ordinance actually does address a 25-year storm event, but that's directed toward the storm drain and our ditches or piping and our swells within the development, not so much actual capacity of the detention pond. But I think the calculations we've already provided, Cody, address maybe even a 25 and a 50 with that respect. If not, we'll be happy to do so.
So, okay. All right, so I have a motion, second, no further discussion?
So we're satisfied that we have an unusual, down the road, an unusual event where we get, you know, into these 50, 100-year rain events in a 24-hour period, this, that we can, this water will be handled on this side and not turn loose downstream to end up in somebody's neighborhood or something? I mean, I guess, I mean, and it, I don't know.
Were you asking a question?
I'm asking a question, but we're all satisfied with it, I suppose we have a motion and second, we're all satisfied with that.
Well, I think you're asking a different, different question, will it handle, what is, you're asking if it will handle?
Well, we're about to potentially approve a stormwater amendment or code that's going to probably add a 50 or 100-year stormwater mitigation type thing, add to what we have now, increase requirements of, and this one is going to kind of go under the, is going to get under the wire, and are we, are we representing our constituents to the extent that we should be by allowing this to pass under that? And there again, I know that the live council would say at this point in time, we have no, we have no legal stance to be able to, failure to do that, it would be something that you would do other than just not approve the project, but I don't want people to look us in the face 10 years from now, because we approved something, and we had an eight-inch or 10-inch rain, and somebody's got six-inch, six inches of water in their house. We've had this before, we've got, President's already said, stuff that's going on in South Starble, because of the rapid development we have down there, and I'm just concerned, and I don't know how much more capital expense you would bear on amping this thing up to a 50-year, a 100-year, something like that mitigation, but it sure would be nice, and it sure would put my mind at ease that we're not going to have something like that, we're going, you know, I mean, I guess that's all I've got to say.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, motion and second, no further discussion, all those in favor, please sign if I buy, I'll tell you what, please answer, yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
I'm sorry, Sistrum, I'm going to have a hand for a change.
I've been requested to start with Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Vaughn, do you mind starting with you, Ward 7?
Yea.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Nay.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Okay, by a vote of five to one, motion carries. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
School Board.
Yes, School Board next. All right, Alderman, if you would please, city clerk, show that Alderman Walker is recusing himself from this next discussion. And we'll give everybody a chance to clear out as you're doing so, oops, I'm sorry. And how we normally handle this, we have three candidates, and I think everyone's hung in with us and we're still here, and what we normally ask you to do, which is, certainly is your choice to do so, but in the, in an effort to have everyone kind of a level playing field, we ask that those who are not being interviewed at the time, please step out, and so we're going in alphabetical order, we have Mr. Wes Gordon, we have Ms. Donna Sims, and then we have Mr. Ryan Walker, our applicant, so if y'all don't mind, we will start with Mr. Gordon, and we will allow him to come make a statement, and in the meantime, we will let the folks who are, who are going to be interviewed, step out if you don't mind, that'd be great, and we will come get you after each one, so...
Mr. Mayor, mid-voting, I'll be on it.
That'd be great, thank you, chief, I appreciate that. All right, Mr. Gordon, we appreciate you being here this evening, would you like to make any kind of opening remarks?
Yeah, I would. First off, I appreciate y'all having us. I want to start off by saying, we have a great school district, it's the reason why me and my family chose to move to Starble when we came back to the Golden Triangle area. My name's Wes Gordon, I work for Mississippi State, I'm a fundraiser, this is my wife and four kids, I've got 11, get this right, eight, six, and five-year-old. I told, I promised my oldest that I wouldn't call her out or introduce her, but I have to, I have to be a dad and embarrass her while I can, but Mary Reeves is at Overstreet, no, Mary Reeves is at Armstrong.
All right, Dad.
Matt's is at Sudeth, Mamie is going to Sudeth in the, in the fall, and Murphy's on the hill. And my wife, Megan, is here also, she grew up in Carthage, went to Carthage High School, I'm from Columbus, I went to Columbus High School, we're both products of Mississippi Public Schools, and we both believe in the power of public schools and what they mean to the city. It's, it's, it's not only is it good for economic development and recruitment of students, but it's also great for the children of Starble. And, you know, I would appreciate the opportunity to be part of this board, I have been a part or around a board my entire adult life, as far as my professional career goes, you know, a good functioning board, it doesn't micromanage, and it's not my job to tell any of their teachers how to run the classroom. If that was the case, I would teach myself. But it's, I feel like the, a good board goes along with the good leadership that we have in place and helps set policy and budget, and is a sounding board for the students and the parents of the school district. You know, it's, it, I just want to, want to thank my kids' teachers that we've had, they're incredible, they all are different, and they all have different talents, they're all in different grades, they all have different academic levels, and each year I can honestly say that when they have left and gone to the next grade, that they're better students and they're better people. And, you know, that's not really anything we've done at home, because honestly, the teachers spend more time with them in the school year than we do, and, and I can't say enough about our public school system.
Thank you, thank you. All right, do we, Alderman Carver, I see your hand.
I'm just going to ask the same one question to each candidate, first of all, I'll say, I've enjoyed playing against you for years, and basically, we were rivals in high school, and then I appreciate your coaching, because I know we saw a lot of headlines on y'all's eight-year-old team, correct?
Yeah.
So, what is the greatest challenge we're facing as a district, and how can you provide corrective action, or anything that you might see as the next 35 years, something we're facing as a district?
I would say, not, not just, this is not unique to us, this is kind of across the state of Mississippi, but funding, you know, it's, it's a, it's a hot topic, we need more of it, you know, by no means do I, I think the board can go out and create new funds, but we could work and really honestly listen to the leadership as to what they need, and, and, you know, help form a budget that makes the classroom a better place.
Yeah, thank you, that's all.
All right, anyone, Alderman Sistrum, I'll just work my way down the line here.
And I'll have a one question for everybody, too. When, when we ran for office, most of us had candidates that we ran against, and one of the, one of the rules of running for office is you've got to be able to distinguish yourself from the other people, what, what separates you from the other candidates?
I'd say the fact that I've been around a board, you know, I don't have a background in education, but I think, I think good functioning boards have a diverse background and bring lots of different talents to the board, and the fact that, that I understand and feel that it's, it's not our job to micromanage, you know, it's their policy, budget come alongside, and the fact that I've been around boards my whole professional career is, is kind of what I think sets me apart.
All right, anyone else down the line here who has a question? Okay, seeing none, well, you had actually answered mine, because mine was just, what do you see as the role of a board member, and when you say policy and budget, obviously, that's, that's the critical piece of that, so, it's the fundamental. All right, any closing remarks that you'd like to make?
I appreciate the opportunity, you know, no matter who gets it tonight, no, I will lay down and put my head on the pillow knowing that we have a good school system, and my kids are getting a great education, and I appreciate everything that the leadership does.
Thank you, we appreciate you being here.
And your children have been troopers.
They have been good, they have been good, thank you. Chief, yes, chief, would you?
They got it, yeah.
Yeah?
They can finally load.
We'll give you a chance to make any opening remarks that you would like to, we certainly have your, your resume and what you submitted, but if you'd like to make some opening remarks...
All right, thank you, I'm Donna Sims, and I am a Starble native, I grew up in Starble, but moved away for 36 years, and have recently moved back a year ago, and have always loved Starble, I've always considered it my home, my family, my mother lived here all that time, and so I have enjoyed watching Starble grow, and just appreciate, you know, the leadership that we have here, and just appreciate this opportunity.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, I know we have two questions down here because they have surfaced before, so I think the same ones, Alderman Carver, do you want to start?
I do. First of all, just thank you, I enjoyed reading your application, very diverse in your background, and I really did enjoy, you have outstanding application. It's the same question I'm going to ask everybody, what is the greatest challenge that you see us facing as a district, and how can you provide corrective action in the next 35 years?
I think the, the greatest challenge for any school district, as far as the education side, would be the dropout rate. You know, I was very involved in the Madison County Schools with that issue, and, but as far as a challenge on the business side, I think is just making sure that as business people, that we continue to provide the support that our schools need through the leadership of the board, as well as the leadership for the city, and it can be a challenge, but it can also be a plus in that we can provide that and help to grow our schools in that way.
I want to ask a secondary question, since you spoke about the dropout percentile, you know, what is something we could do as a community, or even as a board, I know that sometimes, from my, my education at Starble High on, I know there was some discussion maybe on getting individuals more involved with extracurricular activities is one, always one option to get somebody to maintain through all four years of high school, but is there anything else that maybe we could do as a community to address dropout?
Well, I think one thing that we have done as a community is the partnership school. I think that that's going to be a major plus as far as addressing those, but, you know, in my experience, it's better to get students, like in the fifth and sixth grades, to target those, because once they get to high school, that's where, you know, you find more of the dropouts happening, so, you know, reading is so important with regard to dropout rates. You know, if a student can't read, they can't do any other subject, you know, they have to be able to read, and so if we can get them early on in the process, then that's going to go a long way to preventing dropouts. And as far as getting the community involved, it's an excellent way to target those fourth, fifth, and sixth graders.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sistrum?
And my question draws on our political, our joint political background up here, which is, it's important to be able, as a candidate, to distinguish yourself from the pool of candidates, and what sets you apart from the other candidates for this position?
Sure. I think what sets me apart is the fact that our schools are a business, at the end of the day, they are a business as far as what the school board does. You know, a budget of $45 million is significant, and so it has to be run like a business. So, my years of experience as a business person, I've been in banking for 37 years, I've served on boards like the St. Dominic Hospital Board, where I chaired the finance committee for several years, I understand budgets, I understand how a business has to work, and I think I bring that special side as a candidate for this position, because, you know, we need to leave the teaching and the administration of the schools to the principals and the teachers, and the Starble, Octavia County School District needs to be run like a business from business people, and I think that that kind of sets me apart in that way.
Thank you.
Any, Alderman Vaughn?
I've got one question, do you personally have any children or grandchildren attending the public school now?
I have a child, my son, Wade, he is 30, and he spent his entire career in the public schools. My son, Wade, he is 30, and he spent his entire career in the public schools. He does have special needs, which is another gift that I bring to this position in that, you know, we went through the special education system with him. He, he did end up graduating from Mississippi State, but it, it took him seven years to do it. And that was because he is a little slow and has some cognitive challenges, as well as some physical challenges. So I do not have any children in the Starkville, Activa County schools right now. But I do have that history with the public schools.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm just, I'm gonna close in saying, I didn't know you were the past president of the Special Olympics for Mississippi, so that's pretty cool. I appreciate that.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay, all right. And I do have one, you alluded to it a little bit, but how do you see that role of a board member in, in this particular position?
Well, I just, I think I give a different perspective in, in that, you know, I understand business. And my desire to do this is for my love of Starkville. And also the fact that I've, I've always wanted to give back to the community that I've been a part of. I do understand that schools have to be strong in order to grow communities, to sustain communities. I've been very involved in economic development in my career. And the number one question for any industry or business locating into an area is the schools. That's the number one thing they look at. Are the schools, are the schools good, are they strong? So I don't know if that...
Well, actually, what I was asking about, as a board member, what role do you see a board member playing? I understand what you're saying about the importance of schools. But it was, as a board member, you know, how do you, how do you see that board role?
Well, yeah, well, just, you know, establishing the budgets, voting on the different... I mean, we have to pretty much manage the district. And so, you know, managing the budgets and addressing issues. And I know that from time to time, a school board has to look at personnel issues, problems with even students, that disciplinary problems that might go beyond that particular school. So I'm sure that there's a wide variety of things that the board would have to be involved in. But I think that my personal gifts would be on the budgeting side and running the district as a business.
Okay, all right, well, thank you so much. Anyone else? Do you have any closing remarks you'd like to make?
No, I just appreciate the opportunity. And I think, at the end of the day, we've got some, some great candidates that have applied and will be in good hands.
Okay, well, thank you so much for coming out. And chief, would you get Mr. Walker, please? Good evening, thank you for being here. What we just offer you an opportunity to make a, make an opening statement, if you'd like, or tell us about yourself, however you'd like to do that.
All right, well, first off, I'd like to say hello, mayor, vice mayor, board of aldermen, and city of Starville. You know, my, my credentials are pretty clearly described in my letter of intent. But just to kind of recap, I'm a professor in the College of Ed. My research interests and expertise really focus on teacher retention and college and career readiness, which are two big issues or focuses of the strategic plan of the Starkville School District. I've also been a classroom teacher, teaching both seventh grade and high school for a period of time. And I think, most importantly, I'm a vested parent. I have, my daughter Mary Mack will be going into the third grade at Henderson-Horton Stewart. But my hats off to Wes's family, they're extremely well behaved. We left our girls at home with the babysitter. But, but I've been active on the PTO since we, since we came into Starkville. And I think it's important to note that we strategically chose Starkville School District as a place to raise our, our children. I mean, no matter, we really wanted our, our daughters to be raised in a, in a system that will provide them the best opportunities to succeed in life. And I really believe that we found that. So I guess with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll continue with the vein of starting with Alderman Carver.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for putting your, your name in the hat. And I've enjoyed reading your application and your resume. It's the same question I've asked everybody. What is the greatest challenge we're facing as a district? Maybe one or two, and how can you provide, or would you think we have corrective action in the next three to five years? Something we can improve on?
Right off the top of my head, I'm gonna say teacher retention. In my work with, in my work at the National Strategic Planning and Analysis Research Center, I was, I was a fellow here at InSpark. I conducted a lot of data-driven research using the longitudinal system. And one of the things I've found that teacher retention has a huge impact on student achievement. In fact, that we've found that, looking at standardized test scores, if students in a classroom of a teacher that has been teaching more than five years, 50% more likely to pass a test, pass the end of course exams, than a teacher of three or less, or even two years. Teachers that have between that three to five-year gap, students are performing at, you know, 30% more likely to pass the test than a new teacher. So when we start talking about teacher retention, we need to look at more than just getting them in that first year. We need to look at a structural difference and any other way to look at, how do we retain them through that third year and fifth year to really benefit from that expertise? So I'm gonna say the first major issue we need to address is teacher retention and recruitment. I think the second thing we really need to look at is, or that we should focus on, is with this transition to college and career readiness. I don't want to bore anybody, but essentially moving away from no child left behind into every student succeeds, this, this transition has set it up so we're actually moving, we're putting less emphasis on standardized tests. And we're really looking at what are true measures, authentic measures of college and career readiness. This has already been addressed with the movement toward the academic houses. And this is the first step in the right direction, where, based off of economic development, again, working at InSpark, when we are approached by an economic development agency or region, and they say, hey, look, we're looking at recruiting, let's say Winchester, or some big company, Yokohama, or aerospace, we ran some stuff down in the Gulf. But we, we have to look at that education pipeline. And it's not just, is your education system, your public education system, is it rated at four, or five, or 10? It's not just the rating they have, it's actually looking at the academic programs that would help funnel into available jobs, making kids career-ready. And that's part, that's built through partnerships between community colleges, that's built, and that's built into the model of the academic houses. So I'm really excited to see that move forward and see those partnerships grow. So that's the two major things.
I got a secondary question for him. Why, why we got you? As far as teacher retention, other than pay inadequacies, what's the next thing that the district could improve on, on ways to keep teachers?
Well, there's actually some really exciting models out there. I've heard people, essentially, if we look at kind of the expertise we already have in the classroom, teachers that have been there for three to five years, you know, or after that five years, we can look at those as master teachers. One of the ways to, to encourage retention within here is if you mentor those, those teachers that have been through, they've completed their first two years, they're going into their third years, what you do is you give them a course reduction. And in these models that have been very successful, in that course reduction, they go and they mentor and actually work with one of the rookie teachers. You know, they're, they're, they're fresh out of a teacher education program. And during that course reduction, what that does is that frees them up time to work with their colleagues, it frees them up, and it provides a successful model that that new teacher can emulate. And then as they move up and transition past that third year, then they could move into that position. So really, it takes the idea of kind of an apprentice model, and it, and it kind of supercharges it within the classroom. So you're, you're balancing both issues. You have the expertise of a, a more senior teacher, a more experienced teacher, that can help with major issues like classroom management. The rookie teachers haven't developed those skills. And so twofold, it, it elevates the more senior teachers to a position of, beyond that of just a regular classroom, more is into the mentor role, and alleviates their teaching responsibilities and allows them to expand that capacity. And then on the other hand, it helps those rookie teachers with their biggest challenges, which are classroom management and, you know, testing, as it still exists.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Sistrunk.
We have three terrific applicants tonight. What sets you apart from the other two? What makes you the preferred candidate?
Well, I think, first off, I think it's important that, you know, to be vested in the district. And I know, I know Wes has kids in the district as well. And I think, I think what sets me apart is really the level of expertise within some of the critical issues that the district is facing. And, and having a very robust background that aligns to those strategic goals. Really, what I hope to do is, if granted an opportunity to serve on the school board, is really to just apply that expertise to help move in the direction and achieve those goals. But I also very much believe strongly in that anything I do, I want to leave it in better condition than it was. You know, and, and that goes from, you know, providing science lessons to my daughter's classes, or, you know, working with Dr. Passant on the diversity committee, or, I mean, I'm all in with the whole idea that, like, my work is going to keep us moving forward. And, and I can't say that our other candidates wouldn't do that, but I think that I bring a level of expertise that might allow me to maybe accelerate some of those initiatives.
And like Alderman Carver, I'm gonna have a part B to my question now. That's a very worthwhile goal, and I applaud it. Particularly the bringing your expertise to the, to the school system. Why do you have to be a board member to do that?
Well, and actually, you make a very good point. I have, I can continue working with the district, working with Dr. Passant. I mean, the next two weeks, I'm doing some training for elementary teachers. I plan to continue this. I believe that as a board member, I can really be strategic in helping it happen more efficiently. To me, it's really important that when, you know, when the, when the district is looking at purchasing curricula, or looking at test prep devices, or looking at training for teachers, I think as a board member, I can have insight into what expertise is already available within our partnership and within the university, and how we could leverage the resources we have for teacher training and, and other avenues, without having to put out a tremendous expense.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman?
I've got one question. Y'all relax for one, he do have a child in the public school. Are you a native of Starkville?
No, sir, I'm not a native of Starkville. I, I grew up out west, and I met my wife in Natchez, Mississippi, where my sister and brother-in-law resided. And, and I've been in Mississippi for about 15 years now, just over 15 years.
Thank you guys so much.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and, and thank you for applying. And so, and you have a huge level of in-depth knowledge, so, but a board member is a little bit of a different creature. And so how do you view that board member role?
Well, I see the, first off, the board member role is really, I see it as almost, not to downplay the fact, but, but almost a voice of reason. I mean, we need to look at, we need to look at the, the resources that we have as a district. We need to be a team player, and we need to understand how we're going to achieve those goals. But also, we need to think about manageable, manageable growth. I wouldn't want to leap forward and end up with a whole bunch of iPads, or, or specifically things that we couldn't sustain or develop. So I see my, I see my role in the board, not necessarily as a visionary trying to push us to that next level, but to really take the metered steps and address things as they come.
All right, all right. Any other questions from any board members? Do you have anything, any final statements you'd like to make?
Well, again, I'd like to, you know, thank you for the opportunity and the city of Starville. But really, I just, just want to advocate for our schools, and we have a lot of great things going on. And I'm gonna continue to engage, but I appreciate the opportunity to possibly step that up. I really see this as a continuation of the work I've been doing and the next logical step, so.
Well, thank you so much. We really, Alderman Sistrunk's correct, we have three excellent candidates. It's a, it's a wealth. And it's very nice for everyone to be engaged, so we appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, chief, if you want to get everyone, I mean, we're, I think we're at this point now of deliberation, anyone? So if you want, if you'd like to get the candidates and let them come on back in, we appreciate you again. You're welcome to sit down and relax. All right, thank you again. We were, we were just saying what, what excellent candidates we have, and so we appreciate y'all being here. And I think the board is, is satisfied that we couldn't, we can't go wrong, no matter, no matter what we do. But of course, a selection does have to be made. So we appreciate you applying, because it, it matters that we have people who want to be engaged in the community in multiple ways. And this is one of those very important ways. So thank you, thank you for coming out and making the effort and putting yourselves on the line. Alderman Sistrunk, I see your hand.
And, and again, we have not always been so fortunate as to have so many excellent candidates. It makes it a difficult, it makes a difficult process. I'm, I'm very pleased that y'all have been engaged with the schools outside the board. And, and I hope you will continue to be engaged with the schools outside of the board. We'll do this again in a year or so, so. Thank you again for your interest, and I would like to nominate Wes Gordon to fill the school board, school district board of trustees position for a term ending March 2020.
Okay, all right. I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk to appoint Wesley Gordon to fill the remainder of the term of Reverend Lee Brand, who has left us. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Carver. Any further discussion?
I would like just to say, I don't want anyone, well, first, I'm gonna step back and say to Pastor Brand, I appreciate the service that he had. I had an opportunity to visit with him on Sunday morning, and just to express my sincere appreciation for him. And I know that he's made a career move, and I wish him the best of luck. I have nothing but the utmost respect for what Pastor Brand has done in this community, not just on the school board, but what he does through Bethel and everything else that he's involved in. And I love him and love his family. Secondly, tonight, I'll support this, but I'll say to each and every one of these candidates that if history repeats itself, sometimes we've had individuals that didn't, didn't get on the first time, they may get on the second time, and not to, and not to discourage you from coming back a second time and applying again. Alderman Sistrunk and I spoke about this today. This is, in my opinion, an extremely high level of candidacy we had to choose from, which is nothing but to benefit our, our school districts. So I would encourage each and every individual to come back and apply, to stay involved. And if anything can do as a board, to let us know.
Okay, all right. Motion second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, if you would, answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Okay, my vote of four to one. Mr. Gordon, thank you very much. Ms. Sims, Mr. Walker, Dr. Walker, actually, thank you so much for your participation. And quite seriously, we have had people apply two and three times, so please, don't... I've currently got it at 7:35, so we'll come back, let's say, at 7:45. Anyone, any objections to that? All right, we will be in recess for 10 minutes. So, Alderman Sistrunk, I saw your hand, and then Alderman Walker.
Both, both gentlemen bring something special to the table and will be very helpful to us as we go through the planning and on through, potentially on through construction and opening of that park. One has public park experience, one has private sector experience, and I think, I think we would benefit from hearing from both of them. I'm not too terribly concerned about a not-to-exceed amount because that really is, is in our control. And I would assume that we will start with this first phase that we're in right now, which is design, and use them there, and then make a decision if we want to use them further. But it's much like the, the city attorney's contract with us has a not-to-exceed amount. He's a much more regularly-used resource, and, and so that contract reflects that. But it is still ultimately us, up to us to manage to that number. So, so I'm not concerned about the not-to-exceed. The hourly rates seem reasonable, and I think that they would, it would benefit us to get as much input early in the process as, as possible, and from as many different points of view as possible.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Alderman Walker.
I do agree that having, on a project of this scale and scope, you have one of, the one person, one consultant, who would be, I would say, more on the operations piece that could help us make good, I would hope that was, my primary objective would be for that person to help us make good staffing decisions and somebody who could run that. That would be the, I would say, for me, the primary thing where I think that consultant would, would help us would be on the operations end. The other consultant, I believe, had, would, would have, what I would be hoping for, would have the opportunity to help us make good contract purchase decisions, similar to what they've done at other complexes, to help us ultimately save money. I agree with Alderman Sistrunk that, you know, ultimately, the buck stops with the board, but I would, I would propose a not-to-exceed amount that we monitor that could be reevaluated as we move forward, to see that we make sure that we're getting what we think we're getting from, from these consultants. But I would say that a little bit money spent upfront to help you, to help make sure that we don't make a major misstep would be money well-spent.
All right, thank you. Alderman Carver, I saw your hand.
Well, I was just going to ask if, I guess for Mr. Logan's thoughts on this, is this something that we think is outside of his scope of work that he can handle? And obviously, do y'all think, do y'all think this is above and beyond what the department has from a staffing standpoint? Or is this, is this something that, you know, do we have individuals that can already do this in-house?
Well, my, my opinion is that, number one, Mr. Logan is, is like covered up, just in, in handling the department itself. And this is also an area which, you know, he was, he was in College Station, and so he has certainly expertise, and I would expect him to weigh in as well with the consultants. I certainly wouldn't leave out our, our expertise that's in-house, but I just think this is an adjunct to that. And again, coming from a nonprofit, well, coming from a, a city, and then coming from a for-profit, I think that each one of them probably brings some different elements that would have some value that we could work, you know, with Gary as well, for them to all sit down and talk about it, as well as all the other folks that we've currently got, like Dahlhoff Thomas and Neil Schaefer.
First thought. The second thought is from a budgeting standpoint, how much do we budget? I don't know that anything is, I take some reservation with something open-ended such as that to where, you know, what you can do is set a not-to-exceed amount, and if it gets close, at least you've got a threshold. But I won't, I don't know that anybody would build, build a house or a project without some type of estimation of hours, or, you know, if these, if these guys do this for a living, they can tell you in all the other projects they've worked on, this is about how many billable hours I've charged, and that's all you've got to do to come up with a figure. But, you know, any, any, every dollar we spend on this is taken away from turf and taken away from water features, or taken away from baseball fields or something, but I mean, I would, this is not where I want to spend a lot. I know, but on the flip side of that is a, is a, is planning is most crucial part of this constructing phase, so.
Okay. All right. Alderman Beatty, I saw your hand.
Where else did they go, Mr. Walker?
Uh, Mr. Dequilla did Gulfport. His, his resume was included in, in all of that. I don't have my, my deal up. Uh, yeah, Mr. Dequilla did the Gulfport project, and Mr. McDonald has done a number of projects in the southeast, so.
It's customary, when you're doing this size project, to retain people like this as, as kind of middle people as your consultants. Everybody's done that, right?
Yes, well, and that's the reason they both, I think, have LLCs that they do consulting with, so yes, I think that's, I think that's accurate. All right. Alderman Sistrunk, I saw your hand again.
And where, where, and your point is well-taken, that dollars we spend here are dollars that we can't spend somewhere else. Dollars that we spend here hopefully make us more efficient in where we spend those other dollars. What, what these two gentlemen have that, that we don't have on staff right now is ground-up experience, start-to-finish experience with, with projects. And Mr. Dequilla has done a, a really nice project down in Gulfport that, that we saw down at MML. And Mr. McDonald opened the Hoover Park with, with the for-profit that operates it. And I, I think Myrtle Beach, was that the other one? It was somewhere on the east coast that he, he actually opened those parks. I think they both bring, bring fresh eyes to the project and can, and we can benefit tremendously from learning from other people's experience.
Okay, Alderman Carver.
Is there any type of estimation you'll talk to the individuals? Is this a $5,000 thing or $200,000?
Well, and that, I'm sorry, if I may answer, I don't think we have a clearly-defined scope of work, and that would be the reason that I would be a little hesitant about a not-to-exceed amount. I'd take Alderman Walker's point that we could start with a, an amount, and then if it appears that it is worthwhile, we can increase that as, as the scope of services expand. But right now, we are looking at design and, and that sort of thing, and so that's, that's where I would start. I don't want to get it too far ahead of, of ourselves in what we are asking people to do.
Mr. McDonald had a scope of work, and his original scope of work was $225,000, of which I'm in no way comfortable with that number. And so I think this first piece, where I agree with Alderman Sistrunk, I think staffing and staffing, or design and staffing, is where I'm comfortable spending money. And I would propose, if we approved this, as something not to exceed $10,000 per consultant to start. And if things are going well and we feel like we're getting good return on our, our money, then maybe we renegotiate, but I'm certainly not comfortable spending that, that amount of money upfront. Because I think, I think while they're going to bring something new, I think some of the legwork is, is, would be duplicative.
What do they provide, I may be asking you, Alderman Walker, what do they provide as from an actual, from a plan that like Dahlhoff Thomas and, what would they be specifically doing? Is this just from a staffing consulting, or is this, what are they doing that Dahlhoff doesn't do?
I think it would be making final recommendations on field sizes and how many you need of each field size from that perspective. I think from an operations standpoint, that is not what Dahlhoff Thomas does, and they don't run the facility or they don't run the park. And so the McDonald gentleman and his company, he has the experience in, in a business that runs the parks. And I think that, from a staffing standpoint, would be very beneficial. I think the piece that Mr. Dequilla brought is looking at not contracting the entire bid to, to build and including everything in there, being able to pull specific things out to be able to purchase separately that save them significant dollars in the end. And having somebody that knows where those, where those things are and where you can save the most amount of money from a contracting perspective, I think would be something that, that I don't think we have in-house expertise on.
And where is it? Sports Forest out of the mix now?
Well, that's, to me, yes. And I say that because I think that from our perspective, we are better served by following a different model.
Than the Vicksburg model?
Yeah, than, Vicksburg was the, is the for-profit. And I, and I think from everything I have heard from people, that we are better served by doing more along the lines of what Oxford and Gulfport and South Haven do, which is to run it themselves. They each one have a different structure, but they run it themselves. Mr. Walker?
That's what I would be hoping, that these two That's what I would be hoping that these two people could tell us upfront, is what is going to be the best model of operation for our park, so they can objectively look at the different ways of running it to give us a recommendation for what we think is going to be best for our park.
And I think I can tell this, some of this is news to me. I don't know who all's had, what conversations and who's taken the lead on the board and versus the start with parks, I'm not certain, but if y'all don't mind, so we're going to have some kind of weekly update as this goes, so I don't mind.
Absolutely.
I just haven't had, I haven't heard of any of these conversations yet, and so I'm not, you know, last I heard it was Sports Force, and I did miss the last meeting of our baseball tournament, but I just didn't know all these conversations that I have had taken place, and so I'm still thinking, well, we've got Neil Schaefer's on this and Sports Force and Didi Consulting, and I'm, I'm wondering about the number of consultants we've got stacking up and not spending too much money on the consultant side before we get to the construction side.
Right, and, and no question about it, and I think more, it's just more that, as we've gone through the process, I don't know that we've had that many conversations, it's more it's just letting it germinate, you know, letting it, thinking about it and chewing on it, and, you know, what feels right, and, and what seems to be, when we went down to MML and saw Gulfport and, and took a trip to Vicksburg and, and, you know, trying to see other, going up to Oxford, and, you know, I know you've been to lots of parks, so you know what they look like, just kind of seeing those operations and trying to, because I started out going, oh, man, turnkey operation, it is yours, you know, and then I kind of back off and go.
You mean from the city staff?
Yeah, I mean, like, the Vicksburg model.
Okay.
And I thought, and then the more I started thinking about it, the less I thought that that was how Startwell ought to be. I'm thinking that we ought to be engaged and involved, so it's more of a, you know, it's more of a personal, personal thought on my part, but it's a board decision, so that's clearly, we need that kind of board input, so that's kind of why we're here. Yes, sir.
And I would just, I'm, I'm okay with this. I take some comfort with this, but I, I will, from what I've been hearing around the state, and it is very, very positive. It's not an retirement destination, this is an athletic destination, it's fixing to come a, you know, from a leisurely park destination. I mean, the people are really, really excited about this, so I'm okay with an individual from the outside for the first two years. I don't, I don't think it's ever smart to open up anything, and coming out of the restaurant business, you know, crash and burn off the first year, that's not how you want to run a restaurant, you want to slow into it, and if it takes somebody coming out of town to ensure our longevity as a, you know, return on investment standpoint, I'm okay with that. I just, I didn't know some of these conversations, so I would, I would request that we get a weekly email or something that, hey, this is who talking to who this week, and maybe...
Well, depending on what the board does tonight, I will get in touch with both these individuals tomorrow and see about setting up some dialogue between them and the consultants that we already have, Dahlhoff Thomas, Neil Schaefer, Gary Schaefer, and all of those are coming through Dahlhoff Thomas, so, but we will make sure that we get started, because, you know, this is, we only meet twice a month, and so we need to go ahead and push all this forward, so I'm happy to keep everyone in the loop.
Still, I mean, market, so my thoughts are looking back in 10 years, Startwell set the, you know, set the bar very high on what to do in this type of situation, so I know we will, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anything?
These people basically do two things. They help you determine what you want and what you can pay for. I mean, you've got architects that are, are designing the sky, and then, and we've got to determine what we can pay for, what and prioritize, what's important to us, so they have, these, these folks are going to help us do that, right? That's part of, that's scope of, their scope of work.
Yes, that's part of what they're...
The other part is the operation part of when we, when we get up and running this thing, right?
Yes, well, and hopefully we'll have all that known and in place and ready to go before we ever get up and running, so yes, as we go through the progression of how we're going to structure the operations and the staffing and, and all of that.
Okay.
A little ahead of time, so we're, we're two years, roughly two years out. Okay, so, okay. Alderman Long, Alderman Liffen, okay, all right.
Mayor, I'd, I'd move approval.
Need a motion, thank you.
Make a motion to approve, and I would add to the end of the motion, in an amount not to exceed $10,000 per consultant.
Okay, all right, I have a motion from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Beatty. Made me sound like I was surprised, didn't I? I'm sorry. Any further discussion? Alderman Sistrunk?
And, and just for clarity, as we are communicating with these consultants, that they understand that this is the initial phase and, and that we will reevaluate as appropriate.
Okay, all right, yes, ma'am. All right, anything else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four to two, motion carries. All right, next item is consideration of approving sanitation.
Approval.
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Walker to approve sanitation services for the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally. This is nothing new, we have done this over the number of years. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, vote of two, four to two, motion carries. Next item is going to be under engineering. We have the, yes, Mr. Kemp, would you like to come provide some background for this one so that the board can either be comfortable with it or shoot you down again?
Good evening again, mayor, vice mayor, board.
I apologize, I wasn't here the last time this was brought up, and after talking with Alderman Sistrunk, it was recommended that we put a, a max cap on it per year, as well as an, a, a work order, I guess, amount not to exceed as well. The idea on this is that Neil Schaefer provides some traffic expertise that we are not able to provide in-house, not only from a software standpoint of providing traffic models, but also equipment, whether it be video counting software, counting equipment that we would use for intersection counts, for example, to see if it's warranted for signals or stop conditions, or even looking at left turn lane type improvements, intersection improvements. So, it's just, you know, something that we, we have a lot of as-needed contracts, whether they be for surveying or testing, this would just be another as-needed contract if those potential projects come up. The other thing that, that would, they would be utilized for is in the case where a traffic impact study would be required, we would want somebody to validate that or verify that, and that the, the actual report provided by the developer is, is indeed fully factual and, and nothing is being construed, so just to make sure that we're, we're protecting the public as much as we can.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
Mr. Kemp, outside of what you just mentioned, what would be some other examples of where this might be, might be useful?
I don't know of any other ones.
Okay, so it's mainly being that third-party verification type of...
Yeah, and, and, and just the traffic, like our own in-house design and traffic study.
Yeah, I guess that's what I mean. Is there, do you have an example of a project where we would need to go out and, when, when do you need somebody to go out and do that traffic?
On specific projects typically, for example, we did that on Lynn Lane at the new Sports Flex entrance. We verified if a signal was warranted there before we did the design, but we did it as part of that project, so that would be an example. Another example is we, we looked at the intersection of University and Montgomery, you might remember that, to see if we could eliminate the right turn lane in front of the library. We did that with video counts, with video counting equipment to do that, so those are just a couple of examples. Not, not, not needed a whole lot, probably only a few times a year. May our little approval.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. Further discussion?
That's a nice question, but all these cameras have been installed and attached, and that same software still be used to do traffic study counts? I mean, camera on the pole? Or does it have to be...
The new security cameras? See what you're referring to?
Yeah, they're sitting there monitoring all those anyway.
Potentially at those particular intersections, yeah.
Well, I have a head shaking from our IT person.
Well, certainly, video of the cars going through, they'd have to be manually counted.
They, they would manually count them in the office anyway, they kind of spread it out.
I didn't know if it had specialized software that made it count, as it may.
Mr. Kemp, think we talked about staffing, it wouldn't come under that highway 12?
If, if it were a non-M dot road, it would.
In fact, it's a state highway.
I think that, I think that they're going to take the lead on that since this is state right of way.
Okay.
Anything further? All right, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, it's unanimous. One last item on the agenda, according to my look at the agenda, is the claim stocking. Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Motion from Alderman Sistrunk, we have a second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker. Discussion? Oh, goodness. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote...
No, what do you, what do you...
Claim stocking. Yeah, I was not expecting otherwise, thank you. All those, by a vote of four to two, motion carries.
Mayor?
All right, we, I'm sorry?
Excuse me.
All right, guys, give me a second here. We will have, in accordance with the notice under Mississippi Code Annotated 254113, the board will be having a budget work session, a budget work session, on the 26th of July 2019 at 12:00 PM. That meeting will be held at City Hall in the Second floor Conference Room, 110 West Main. Public and media are invited to attend. Notice should be provided to the work session with one hour of this meeting posting at City Hall. Notice should be made part of the minutes, and the work session will be open in public meeting. The City of Startwell Public and Press are invited to attend. We also, if you recall, have a scheduled work session with, that is a joint session with County and Oceta on Thursday at the County Courthouse. That, too, has been posted, so if I have a motion to, in this case, adjourn.
One minute for you, let me say the budget session, when? On the 26th?
On the 26th, yes, sir, at noon. It'd be a work session.
Noon, okay.
Budget work session.
That's on Friday.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, all right, 26th.
Mayor, how specific are we going to be addressing there, on the 26th?
It's a budget, it's just a budget. We've got, you know, we've got upcoming budget, vice mayor, and you know how that goes. All right, nothing further? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Say move.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker, a second, Alderman Long?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.